I guess so. All right, I've got six o'clock. So at six o'clock, I call this meeting the Saginaw City Council to order. Please rise for the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On this Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Item number two is the invocation for that. David Mills from Kingdom. Welcome, sir.
Please join me as we pray. Father God, I thank you today for both the blessings and the challenges that you've provided today. I thank you for this great city. Father, I thank you for our mayor and the council. Father, I pray that you would grant them with wisdom and guidance, direction, on how to lead this city the way that you would be glorified in it. Father, I pray for each and every first responder as they patrol our city and as they respond to different incidents around the city. Father, I pray for their protection and their safety. I pray, Father, for every citizen. I pray that you would just wrap your arms around them and provide them with wisdom and guidance and direction and safety as well as they move about the city. Father, I pray that your business would be taken care of today with all glory given to you, and we thank you for that in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend. Item number three is the audience participation. If there's an item on the agenda you want to speak to, please see the city secretary. And please silence your cell phones, devices, etc., so we can have a nice, quiet meeting. Item four is the consent agenda. A is action regarding minutes of June 1st. B is action regarding building improvement grant agreement with Palomino Southern Limited. C is action regarding arbitrage rebate compliance service agreement. Any questions, comments on the consent agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make this my last motion. I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. You're gonna make me cry, Patrick. Item number five, recognition of Tarrant County College Law Enforcement Academy graduates. And for that, Police Chief Lee Howe.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Just want to do something a little different tonight and introduce our two latest police officers that are joining the force. Today I have Jacob Rodriguez and William Osteen. Y'all will step on up here. It takes a lot to be a police officer, and these guys passed all the tests, and they just graduated from TCC after a five-month Basic Police Officer Academy, which is not easy. So we thought we'd bring them to council, introduce them to y'all, and about half the city. So this was a great night to set this up. Anyway, both of these young men, one of them is Saginaw native, and then the other married a Saginaw native, so they're both residents of our community, and they are, you know, exactly the kind of people that we want to hire on and be placing our community. So I wanted to welcome them here and gonna do a quick oath, swear them in. You guys wait, ready to add him? Aye, state your name.
Jacob Rodriguez.
We solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of peace officer of the state of Texas, and will to the best of my ability preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and the laws of the United States and of this state. So help me God.
I do.
And now sworn in officially.
All right, Oestings, I feel old, because I know he's a little bitty boy, but congratulations and luck. We're glad to have y'all both here. All right, moving forward. Item number six, consideration action regarding Resolution 2021-16 canvassing the returns and declaring the results of the runoff election for councilman place two. For that, City Secretary Janice England.
Hey, Mayor, Resolution 2021-16 canvases the runoff election that we had recently on June the 5th. Our election in May resulted in no one getting over 50% for place two, so the top two candidates were in the runoff on the 5th. Those were Sherri Means-Hart and Nikki Lawson. We received the final official certified results yesterday from Tarrant County, and our numbers didn't change. Sherri Means-Hart had 273 votes, Nikki Lawson had 480 votes. So that therefore, Resolution 2021 declares those results and declares Mr. Lawson elected to office.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I believe I'm motion that we accept the resolution of candidacy.
Okay.
I'll second.
You'll all second? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Awesome. Item number, or number seven, oath of office for councilmember place two. For that, City Secretary Janice England.
Okay, if I could get Mr. Lawson to join me up by the podium, we'll swear him into office.
Is this where you want me?
Why don't you come on the other side, so they can sit down if somebody wants to take a picture? Oh, and the people at home can see you. You'll raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Name, Lawson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
Duties of the office.
Of councilmember place two.
Councilmember place two.
Of the city of Saginaw.
City of Saginaw.
Of the state of Texas.
State of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
Will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution.
Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
Of the city of Saginaw.
Of the city of Saginaw.
So help me God.
So help me God.
And that does it. You are now official.
I didn't get to take my place. I had to sit in the audience.
We're not done with you yet, boy.
I'm gonna...
You're not leaving yet, okay.
Sit where Charlie said. Sit right where Charlie said.
Oh, it's okay. All right, so item number eight. It's been a long time coming. We're gonna say goodbye to Mr. Farr this evening. So before I give Patrick the chance to speak, because you know he wouldn't get out of here without speaking, you know Patrick at all. Anybody else want to say any words? Anybody else in the council would like to say a couple of words for Mr. Farr?
Oh, don't. Y'all don't do that. Y'all don't do that. I'm serious.
Want to speak now, or...
I want you to, whomever wants to go first. Mr. Beasley?
Well, I want to say, you know, for the past two years, I sat next to Mr. Farr. And in the beginning, when I, you know, first joined the council, I looked up to him as the role model for me, excuse me, as my role model, because he stood for things that, and I didn't know what to expect, but I heard a lot of things about Mr. Farr, and I sat next to him, and I've learned from this man. He's taught me so much whether he know it or not. I wish him the best, and I'm gonna try to hold it down in your place. I'm about to be the troublemaker. Thank you.
Well, Patrick, you know we fight, but we got long too. You've taught me a lot, and I appreciate that. I really like that I can call you and you answer your phone, tell me what I need to know. We're gonna miss you, but you're not gonna be far, and you told me that I could still call you, so don't change your phone number. Good luck in whatever you and Misty decide to do.
Thank you.
We're gonna be missed.
Cindy?
Patrick, it's been a pleasure working with you, not only here on city council, but also in Rotary. I've learned so much from you. We approach things from different perspectives and different experiences, but we always seem to agree in the end, and I just appreciate your patience with everybody, and, you know, you're gonna be missed.
Thank you. Mary?
We're really gonna miss you, Patrick. I've learned a lot from you. Patrick and I are both very bullheaded, and, you know, we've had words, but more often than not, we agree, and we're gonna miss his knowledge and his ability to state things in a very succinct way and to maybe bring up thoughts that maybe none of us would have considered. And so I think we're gonna really miss that, and all of us are gonna have to step up and be that replacement.
You know, I never thought I'd say we're gonna miss Patrick, so, but, no, I've known Patrick a long time. We've worked together on several different things, committees, other things. Patrick's a hard guy to get to know. Once you understand him, you can appreciate him a lot more. I've done that. I've got a lot of respect for Patrick. We have gone at it. We've had words together, not always pleasant, but we've always come around and respected each other. Nobody works harder than Patrick for this city. Nobody. The citizens have got every dime out of Patrick that they paid him because he has worked so hard and put his heart and soul into this city. He really has. Nobody prepares harder. He has pushed me to be a better mayor and be a better council member just by his preparation and his details, so I've learned a lot. I do appreciate you. It's really hard to say goodbye because after we've finally learned how to work with Patrick and how to work together, but all things must end, and I understand, and I appreciate Patrick stepping away to do what's right for himself and his family, which is admirable. So we'll miss you, but, man, thanks a lot for everything, buddy. I really appreciate it. Would you like to go? You want to stay here, or you want to sit here? Wherever you want to go.
I'll address y'all.
Okay. What are you gonna do?
You guys stop me up. Well... Well, when I'm sitting up there, I kind of feel like I'm having to speak pretty much from my mind. Not from heart. What a great group. I didn't think it'd be this hard. I thought it'd be done, see ya. But, you know, I have to tell you, I have learned so much in six years. The first year that I came onboard, I think every one of you know how many sparks flew, and a lot of that just has to do with, I am hard-headed, and it takes a whole lot to get me to change my mind when I've made my mind up. But I have watched so many people develop into such great things, and owe so much to each one of you for helping me find who I was as a city leader. The staff, and I'll name one person in particular, because I've really not called enough attention to her, because I know that every time I made a policy change or pushed for a policy change or a decision, she caught the very tail end of it. Kim, you're awesome. I want you to know that. She holds up a whole lot. She keeps this city, the book straight, and she keeps us in financial order, and she makes sure that we're not gonna get out of the bounds. And, you know, coming into this with a little bit of a business mind, and I don't speak municipal language, we had our own vocabulary lesson together for quite some time, but I want you to know how much I appreciate you and your hard work and what you do for this city. Really want you to know that. And next, you know, I gotta tell you, Janice, she's killed at least a thousand trees in printing, printing my council packet, because everybody else does theirs on iPad. I like to hold it in my hand and make notes and ask questions and flip pages. Thank you so much, Janice, for all that you've done for me to help me be a successful council I want to tell you, Nick, you're gonna learn a lot, and you should spend the first six months at least learning everybody you're serving with. I shortcut that, and I'll tell you, it was a setback. It was a setback not only for me, but I believe it was a setback for this council, and it was a setback for this city, because I came in here with guns blazing, and everybody in here will tell you that's the truth, okay? My only recommendation is you just listen and learn the people that you're gonna be serving with. Don't come in guns blazing, because it might be beneficial in the long run, but will lose steam. And I have to tell you, we've gained a lot of steam in the last three years. A lot. Our city has developed into something that I did not think would be possible in 10 years in a three-year period, and it's the steam that's been generated by this council and this staff supporting it, and by the electorate, who support things like bond programs and I thought about one thing, this is the one thing that I carry to the dais with me every day, the Book of Matthew. Matthew was pretty smart to write down what Christ said on the Mount of Olives, when he talked about the parable of talents. Our job is not to bury the money that our master gives us. Our job is to make it work, to make it work for the citizens of Saginaw. We don't do well when we just take money and stick it under the rug and see what happens to it, because it's not gonna do anything but collect dust. We will be judged by what we do with what we're entrusted, and all of you are entrusted with everything these folks have, what they've invested in this city, what they believe to be this city to be. That's entrusted in you, and that's what Matthew meant in the parable of the talents. When he wrote it down, Christ's words himself, "I trust you, do a good job for me." So thank y'all so much again for everything you've done. Oh, one last thing, Gabe. I do want to, I want to say something specific about Gabe. When I was a young construction manager, this was 30 years ago, there was a concrete contractor that told me that, boy, you have a whole lot of thrust, but very little rudder. And I really didn't know what that meant at the time, okay? Starting out, and I think everybody who's young and is wanting to get moving in life has a whole lot of thrust, and they don't have a whole lot of rudder, because rudder comes with experience. You gotta get hit in the face a few times, you gotta have setbacks, and that rudder's gotta get a little bit longer and a little bit longer. The key is, don't lose the thrust. And I'll tell you what Gabe has brought to this city, is thrust. Sitting on that dais, you're the rudder. You let that man thrust us, just as he has for the last three years, this will be a very successful endeavor, no doubt about it, and I appreciate the thrust you've brought, Gabe. Thank you very much for all you've done for this city in the three years, and I hope for more to come. Thank y'all very much. Y'all have a great evening.
Hey, y'all, wait. Don't worry. Come here. Uh-oh. We have a parting gift for you, sir. One last thing, Janice, put it out there.
That's a lot of trees.
Look forward to working with you. We've got a new council, new ideas, new energy, so I really appreciate it and look forward to great things to come. So we really appreciate you stepping up. All right, item number nine, election of mayor pro temp. Brandon, will you explain how we do this, because I always forget every year how we should do this?
Certainly, this can either be by formal motion or general consensus of council. It's called for in the charter, and it's a requirement.
Okay. Do I have a motion for mayor pro temp? Cindy?
I'd like to nominate Valerie Tanker to continue her wonderful job as mayor pro temp for the city of Saginaw.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Beasley, second. All right, all those in favor, raise your right hand. opposed? All right. Congratulations, Mayor.
Thank you.
Good working with you. All right.
So that's my first vote.
There you go. Well done. All right. Item number 10, at 6:20, we're in a public hearing. Consideration action regarding request for approval, revise the zoning map for neighborhood commercial multifamily for the Boswell family, et cetera, et cetera. So as noted in here, the applicant has requested that this be postponed until the July 20th council meeting, so we will not take public hearing tonight. We will keep the public hearing open and reopen it on the 20th when the applicant comes back. There's nothing for us to discuss tonight. They don't have a proposal in front of us. We'll see what comes forth on the 20th, so I would like to entertain a motion to table this, and we will bring it back on the 20th.
And it would be to table the item and the public hearing.
Okay.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we table until July the 20th.
Table the item and the public hearing.
Oh, the item and the public hearing.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Cindy, second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Any opposed? All right. Thank you, sir. Thank y'all. Okay, and thank you, Brandon, for keeping us out of prison. Item number 11, consideration action regarding appointment to advisory and recreation parks board and animal shelter advisory committee board of adjustments, library board, and planning and zoning. For that, City Secretary Janice England.
This item, each year, we have different positions on the boards that stagger each year, and some roll off, and it's time to do that. We always do that, usually in June. We contacted everyone that was up, or their term was about to expire, to see if they would be willing to be reappointed or were interested in continuing. You have that information in your packet, and you also have a list of, I believe there's eight names of people that have turned in applications that were interested in serving on various boards. So it would be up to the council tonight to reappoint those individuals and appoint new where it's needed and get that taken care of.
Okay. I think Councilmember Copeland has an idea she wanted to run by the council, so Mary?
Yes, I have a suggestion that we do it a little bit differently this year. This is the second year in a row where we've had more applicants than positions open, and this is such an important decision as to who to put on these various boards, and I think it would be a great idea if either Todd or Gabe would appoint three of us as a subcommittee to get together maybe 30 minutes before the 20th, July 20th meeting, and we have all done our homework, and we will get together and discuss who we think these appointments should be. It's a very, you know, it deserves a lot of discussion and a lot of thought, not just a, oh, well, yeah, let's put this person on this board, how we've done it in the past. So I think that would make it a little bit more, put a lot more thought into it, and maybe do a better job, especially since we do have more applicants than positions. And I would like to thank everybody who does apply and thank everybody who's on the boards and wants to stay on the boards, because they are very, very, very vital to how our city runs.
Councilmembers, thoughts on that proposal? Cindy?
I'm okay with it. We don't have any of these committee meetings before the 20th, do we?
Janice?
The only ones that might meet in July would be possibly a parks board meeting and a plan and zoning meeting. They can continue on, it's kind of like the council does, as my understanding, the city attorney can verify. I believe they continue on until we actually take action.
That's correct. They hold over until they're replaced, if they aren't replaced.
I like the idea. I think it'd be a great job for Nikki.
What do y'all, what's the rest, what's the rest of the council think? And I'm fine with this idea, if the council, whatever the council's pleasure is.
It's fine.
Nikki, what do you think? You got a word?
Yeah, I think it's good.
All right, so as appointing committees, I think that's my job. I think it is. Mary wants to be honest, she's already told me. I will take, instead of appointing, how about offline? Anybody who wants to be on the committee, hit me up. Just after this meeting, if you want to be on, let me know. We only have three because of a quorum. We can't have a quorum, so Mary plus two others. It won't be me, so it'll be Mary plus the rest, two of the rest of y'all. So after the meeting, if you want to, let me know.
I mean, I'm fine to be honest.
If you want to? Okay, sure. That's fine. Is there a third? Want to do it right now? You want to do it? Okay.
No, I'm on this architect thing, and it's mind-blowing.
Okay, so, so the committee, so we will have Mary Copeland, Cindy Big Horse, Nikki Lawson will be the committee, so then we need a motion to table this until the 20th, July 20th meeting, and that group will meet prior to that meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we table item number 11 until our July 20th meeting, and that our subcommittee will meet prior to that meeting and be prepared to give their suggestions as to who they believe should be on the boards.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Valerie, second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed? All right, thank you. Also, let the record reflect, we do have a quorum. I did not say that earlier. All right, moving forward, item number 12 is consideration action regarding ordinance number 2021-14 ordinance, meaning ordinance 2002-04, zoning regulations city of Saginaw for deadline registration, extended stay hotel and motel. For that, City Manager Gabriel.
Mr. Mayor, if you'll recall, we workshop this item with you, some of the issues surrounding, and Susie Victor is here to answer any questions you might have about the ordinance.
Hello, everyone. Just to briefly recap why we need this ordinance, I just wanted to give y'all that brief update. So just as a reminder, we're wanting to implement this update so that we can ensure that all patrons, staff, and community members are in a safe and welcoming environment, but also, most importantly, we're wanting to prevent hotels, motels, and extended stays from becoming apartment complexes essentially. So just some of the things that ordinance 2021-14 touches base on is further defining some definitions like hotel, motel, extended stay, consecutive stay, and code enforcement official, and so we hope that these definitions will better define and clear up any conflicting language that currently exists in the ordinance. Some of the mandates we're going to have on there is ensuring that both written or electronic records are being upheld also within these hotels, motels, and extended stays, and ensuring that there is a 180-day limit afterwards. All of these records must be accessible to all code enforcement officials, so that way we can have any investigations that need to be set forth. Some of the new standards put into place include some of the cleaning restrictions in terms of how many people can stay within the hotels, as well as inspections and bona fide employee mandates as well. One of the most important things is laying out vacancies in between stays, as well as ensuring that hotels and motels have a 30-day consecutive staying limit, as well as extended stays have a 180-day total extended limit. So with that being said, if anyone has any further questions from now or the workshop, please let me know, or Larry Little is always here as well.
Questions? Cindy, sure.
I've worked in corporate America for quite some time, and we always had corporate apartments, corporate hotel rooms, actually. They were not exactly apartments, so if they had guests coming in, or new employees, or new hires coming in, they could come in and stay. Time in Houston, I couldn't find apartments, because I was moving there right after Hurricane Ike came through, so I was, but they had, they paid for this room for continuous, for a year at a time, and I didn't see anything in this ordinance that covered anything like that, although the people changed out. It was the company that rented that room, or that block of rooms, for a year at a time.
Yes, ma'am. So that would be in terms of an extended stay hotels. Extended stay hotels have their own regulations for business ventures, so that would be entailed in that. Also, in case of anything that's not business, like of housing of last resort for, say, the pandemic that happened, or any of those hurricane issues that you were mentioning, we also have an exemption for this kind of situation, which includes any state government mandate, or federal or local, that can exclude that from that, so it couldn't...
Right, but a lot of times, these hotels that I stayed at were not under your extended stay definition. They did not have the cooking appliances in the rooms. It was just a standard hotel room that they had, so I didn't know if this ordinance allowed for that type of...
I think our concept is mostly, people who are doing business aren't necessarily staying that long here, just from the trends that we're currently seeing, so that's why we didn't touch base on that, per se.
But we could change it if we need to.
Yes, we could always go back and do that as well, yes.
Mr. Mayor, if I might add, to address the question, it's based on the occupant, so it doesn't matter who... So, it doesn't matter who necessarily books the room. It's the occupant. So, if somebody stays 180 days, then they've met the limit of the ordinance. You know, there's some provisions with extenuating circumstances. I think, given our extended stay, or potential extended stay facilities in the city, that's not a probable issue. But thank you for bringing that up.
Other questions?
Yeah.
Nick?
I read through this, and I went back and watched it. And where I was struggling at is it, one of the reasons for changing this was for, I guess there was a lot of crime.
Yes.
And they had some specific out. By instituting this, because what I've seen, the crust of this is just defining and putting the boundary of how long someone can stay. So, how's that? I mean, what are we expecting to get out of this in drop of crime, and what type of crimes?
Mr. Mayor, I can address that. The issue, we spoke earlier on this, the issue with the extended stay is that these facilities, I may defer to the fire chief or the building official, to house long-term stays. The issue is that they're being used as apartment complexes, and that's what we're trying to regulate. There are other means in our earlier discussion that, you know, address criminal activity, specific code, or building deficiencies. So, the matter here is the length of stay and not encouraging long-term stays, so that it would be like an apartment.
Yeah. And just to get this, also, the, there was a statement in there about a maximum $2,000 fine. That isn't above and beyond what would normally be hit. If this is talking about that, and the maximum of any one single fine would be, would be $2,000. Correct?
That's correct. The standard, I believe, is a maximum up to $2,000 violation per day.
Yes. For any zoning ordinance violation, state law permits the city to issue a citation. And of course, that's to be adjudicated by municipal court, but the maximum fine can be up to $2,000.
Yeah. I would just want to make sure there wasn't a fine on top of all of that. I just, that's one clarification. Appreciate it.
And it's, and just to clarify, when we say fine, it really is a matter for the court to decide what the amount is.
Right.
And so, it's a penalty upon conviction, or if the violator pleads to the offense in the first place.
Chief Howe, maybe you could briefly just update us on how this will help us in our crime fighting activities?
Well, they, it is true that there are some motels that will be long-term residents of criminal activity. And so, you know, they, some of the registration restrictions and things like that will help us to monitor that. There's, there's other ways that, well, that, we have, we have some hotels that are in the city that we talked about before, that where we tend to have residents that stay for a long time. We find lots of drugs in and out of those places. They become, because they can stay longer there, they become known drug outlets. And so, that's one of the things that we can help kind of reduce. We recover a lot of stolen vehicles there, a lot of people with felony warrants, things like that, also in some of those locations. So, just having some further restrictions that will allow, give us tools to identify some of those problems and take some action on them to eliminate them in our city is a plus.
Thanks, sir. Any other questions for Susie?
Yeah, I mean, are we working on the symptom, or are we actually trying to get to the root cause? That's what I'm, the whole time I've been looking at this and reading, that's what I've been trying to figure out. Is passing these ordinance going to fix the root cause of the problem, or are we just fixing the symptom of the problem? And so, can you help me, how would this, I mean, will this root out tho, those undesirables? You know, and what exactly tool in here, other than putting a 90-day, and you boot them, they're still there. They're just going to go somewhere else, probably within our city or somewhere else. How do we put these people in jail, or whatever needs to be done to root that out? It's, you know, I, I hate to pass an ordinance to put a Band-Aid over a true problem without finding the root cause.
So, we're trying to take a proactive approach. Some of the tools that we're going to have are video surveillance system requirements, as well as some other procedures, like having locked doors at certain times with fire chief approvals. Some of those things to better constrain people going in and out of the hotel at whatever amount of time. Also, so that, that video surveillance and these records that are being upheld, we have the opportunity to look at that and investigate the matter. So, that would take us then into the next, and the most important part of the ordinance. We have the ability to process a nuisance abatement as soon as any provision is not upheld. And so, that would be the proactive part. This gives us the ability to go on those matters and go into that part, which would be, we, in order to process the nuisance abatements in the state of Texas, we're going to need all the evidence, and that essentially is coming from all the investigators. So, this is giving us some more power. I don't know if Chief Howe wants to add on to that.
So, can we not go, go for that now? I thought that that was already on the books.
Mr. Mayor, we can't regulate what is becoming a zoning issue. So, these, these are being used in a manner like an apartment complex for long-term stays. That's not what they're designed. The other issues happen there, and there's other means to address that, through nuisance abatement, certainly monitoring of criminal activity, the actual building deficiencies and health and safety standards with the building department. So, it's another tool to gain compliance and improve the health and safety of the area and the quality of the buildings.
One final question, sorry. But being from the private sector and working in companies, how much burden is this going to put upon these private companies? How much are they going to have to spend, you know, upfront cost and residual to take care of these ordinances?
So, most of the requirements that we're adding aren't necessarily going to add that much monetary addition to their budgets. The only thing would be the video surveillance systems and some security measures. But we firmly believe that these are requirements that are probably most likely going to be requested upon state officials. And, you know, hotels, motels have their own standards as well. So, this would only be to their benefit. And they have a 180-day period to combine to these new terms as well.
Now, I guess I view it as a multifaceted approach. We're putting, really adding things to our toolkit, like to the building ordinance, building code toolkit, to the police, to the fire as well. It's not just one thing. Like, it's not just one thing to clear out crime to make it better. We're doing several different things to make the complex safer, but also make our city safer. I mean, as Chief has said in the past, he knows where to go look for a lot of the bad guys in our city. A lot of them are in these few different motels. So, we're using this to help root out some of that, and with other, some other things as well. So, I'm looking at it holistically from a bigger approach, and I think that's what Susie was trying to do with this ordinance as well, to just add. It's not, it's not going to fix everything with one fell swoop, but it will add to our toolkit.
Yes.
If that makes sense.
So, sir, since we're doing that, is there any way that, I mean, this is a committee, right, that we can ask them to come back in, say, six months? Like, do, I know in the private sector, we do that. We implement something, we measure it for six months, and then we come back and see if we're getting the expected results. Can we do something like that? Have them come back in six months and tell us how it's working?
We can get police data in six months and see how we are, yeah. Things have changed.
Happy to do that. I believe they have 180 days to come into compliance.
Yes.
So, in six months, they would have come into compliance with the requirements. And, you know, after that, say, six months from that, so a year from now, I think we would have a better idea of how many long-term or longer-term stays we have. So, that's a fair point.
Any other questions for Susie? Mary?
Just, just a comment. The way I look at it is, we are making it, with this ordinance, we will be making it more difficult for the criminal element to choose these locations as their base of operation, which is a good thing. And it also makes it, it makes the hotel motel operators have stricter requirements on how they accept customers. And so, just to answer your question about the root cause, I agree with you. I wish we could. But, you know, getting at the root cause of all of the ills that are going on in society would be wonderful if we could do that. And I'm not being facetious. I'm being, I'm being sincere. But, you know, the police department can't do that. They can't figure out what the root cause and how to fix it is, and we can't either. So, we can only make ordinances to hope, you know, to lessen the negative effects of any particular situation that's occurring in the city. And I think this ordinance would go a long way into helping us clean up those areas and make them less likely to attract the criminal element. Would you agree with that, Chief Howe?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Big Horse?
Have we discussed this and got input from the hotel motels in our area? And are they aware that this is coming to them?
Yeah, the extended stay regulations are common in DFW. So, I don't, I believe Larry has, I see some head nods in the crowd. Are you a hotel operator by chance? No, just kidding. I know Larry's had a lot of contact with property owner at the Great Western, because on the building side of the equation, there's multiple deficiencies, and that's ongoing. But, you know, a lot of that will work through the, the building department, so.
But they're aware that this ordinance, all of our hotels and motels in Saginaw know this ordinance is coming. Okay. I just, I just don't want to throw a big surprise on them and then, and then be caught unaware. Because if that's the case, then I would not be in favor of voting for this. And also, the other thing I have, and by the way, you've done a great job.
Yeah, thank you.
You really have. And there's a lot to think about. But, you know, when you get seven other people, you know, other questions are going to pop up. How are we going to hold the hotels responsible for making sure that they have a problem with the person that's decided they're going to squat in that room and not move out? Are they, again, this part of, have we talked to the hotels to get their buy-in on this ordinance? Hey, chief, you know, we got this family here. They will not leave, you know. Chief, you know, we got a family staying here, but, you know, they're not causing any problems. You know, how is that communication between the hotels and the city going to work?
Yes, ma'am. So, we have a section in the ordinance that states that any criminal activity, or anything that would go against those provisions, they would need to talk to a code enforcement official. And so, the definition of code enforcement official does include the police chief or the police department. We're not specifying just chief or a police officer. Just the entire police department. And if they don't do so, that would be going against the provisions, which, again, would be for probable cause of a public nuisance abatement process. So, or that would also go into a fine if they would omit the information as well.
Okay, thank you.
And just to add on to that, if I could quickly, I'm sorry, over here. So, the municipal ordinance can only go so far, right? And just to, the comment made earlier to you about imprisonment, we have no authority under municipal ordinance to arrest somebody for violating a Class C offense, basically, which is a municipal ordinance. If someone is squatting in a hotel room, code enforcement's not going to be able to physically remove them from that room. That's going to have to be a civil matter. But at least it will allow us an opportunity to be informed about what's going on. And we can then place pressure under this ordinance on the hotel operator to make sure that that tenant is evicted.
Any other questions?
I just want to say thank you. Good job on this. I think you put in a lot of work, and you answered a lot of questions that I had no idea was an issue.
Thank you, sir.
And I think, I kind of lost my thought. I think as far as like the hotels and things, I don't think they, even if we notify them, I mean, I don't think they're going to be wanting this, because it's going to require them to spend money. And they're making money with these, acting as extended stays. So, I think, you know, when we just give it to them, we give them their 60 days. I mean, they're 180 days to comply, and then we move forward. Because, I mean, they're not going, they don't want to spend money. That's why they have all of these code issues now. They're not trying to spend money and evict people, and, you know, it's taking away from their money. So, they don't want to spend extra money to fix these things. So, I think this is a good step in the right direction. So, let's move forward.
Any other questions for Susie? Yes, sir?
Sorry, as long as there's no more questions. So, I need, I need to point one thing out, and so I apologize. This is an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance. And so, I don't believe we advertised a public hearing for this. And so, we'll need to table this until the July 20th meeting, regrettably.
Well, there you go. All right, any other questions then? I will entertain one more motion to table.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we table the ordinance number 2021-14 until July 20th, when we can.
Okay.
I'll second.
Cindy, second? All in favor of tabling, raise your right hand. Excellent. Thank you, Susie.
Thank you.
Well done. We'll get there.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Just one short recognition. I misspoke when I introduced Susie. She's now Susie Victor Trevino. So, she got married.
Oh, congratulations, Susie.
Since the last time she presented.
Wow, very nice. All right. So, at 6:46, recess into workshop, item 14, Budget Workshop, Estimated Tax Rate. Finance Director Kim Quinn.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I've just got one slide for y'all tonight. We are working through the budget process. In fact, this, this week, we've got meetings with the budget, with the department heads to review their individual budget requests. And starting at the next council meeting, we'll be going specifically and reviewing the different funds that we normally do. But tonight, we had mentioned in previous council meetings, the tax rate options that are available to y'all. And as I always say with these estimates, they're just estimates. The only thing I can guarantee is they're not going to be exactly right. But this is the best estimate, given the information that we have at this time. And I wanted to give you an idea of the difference in tax rate and impact on an average homeowner's taxes, based on the three different tax rates that we've discussed, the non-revenue tax rate, the voter approval tax rate, and the de minimis tax rate. And the reason that we wanted to present these to you tonight is because we, as we had mentioned before previously, if the council's desire is to go forward with the de minimis tax rate, then the budget calendar will need to be expedited. And so, we'll have to present a proposed budget actually the middle of July, before we have certified values from TAD. And then we will revise it as we go. But it's important that we know ahead of time if that is the direction that you're intending to go.
All right. So, questions? So, let's walk through this chart real quick, Kim.
Sure. The first column is, I'm sorry, did you have questions?
No, go ahead.
Okay, okay. The first column, current year adopted, the taxable value is what was certified by TAD in July. That's our current tax rate is the .461579. It's split in between the MNO, which is, again, funds the operations, and the INS, which is the debt service. That's to pay the debt off that the city has issued. The revenues there are the amount that goes into MNO, General Fund, INS, the debt service fund. And then the average homeowner, based on our current year average value of $188,000, the average homeowner pays $868.23 a year in city taxes. Our current estimates, that's just based on the current taxable value. It hasn't changed the tax rate, and it hasn't changed the homeowner's tax bill. I just wanted to show you that the taxable value changes, right? So, in July, that's TAD's best estimate of the total taxable value, but it's still changing throughout the year. But that's where we're at right now. But that's where we're at right now. We received, um, preliminary estimates in last week, and we're looking at about two point three. Usually our June estimates are the low, the very lowest that we have, and they'll go up from there. So I think that will end up certified in July if, if, uh, trends continue. I mean, I think out of eleven years, there's only two years where we've gone down from June. Normally we, we go up from, so I'm thinking we'll be probably pretty close to two point four billion as far as total taxable value. Um, and so I did my very best estimate of coming up with, um, the taxable, uh, the tax rate as well as the, um, act, estimated tax bill, um, of a homeowner under those three different tax rate scenarios. I, and I have the assumptions listed at the bottom, um, a seven percent growth in the existing tax base. Um, we had forty-four million in, and it's actually, it went up a little bit from the latest estimates I have, were between forty-four and forty-six million for new value that was added to the city's, uh, tax rolls. Um, the debt rate is, um, based on the additional nine million dollars bond that we talked about in the last meeting, or maybe the meeting before that. And our average residential taxable value went up, um, this past year it was a hundred and eighty-eight thousand, we've gone up to two hundred and four thousand is an average valued home in the city of Saginaw. Overall taxable value, if we get up to about two point four billion, um, the total increase will be nine percent, and of that, um, the existing values increase about seven percent.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Just a couple of points to add, uh, and for the benefit of the crowd, so we're pretty proud of our tax rate here in Saginaw. Your next door neighbors across the street in Fort Worth, um, are substantially higher. We, uh, have done a lot of.
Seventy-four cents.
That's correct, so.
We're forty-six, they're seventy-four.
Yeah, even after all of the issuance of all the, the money for our voter approved projects, our tax rate will be substantially less than literally across the street in Fort Worth. I wanna bring a couple items to your attention, so one, uh, Chief Howell has had some discussions with EMS ISD. They are proceeding down the path to create their own, uh, police department, which is common for school districts. Uh, how that will affect us is we have three school resource, resource officers currently. Um, those contracts will be renewed for one more year, and a, after that time, we would have to absorb, uh, those positions. So the net, um, effect is a position and a half to the general fund, uh, or the CCPD. So, you know, thankfully we have two years, really two budget years to absorb that, we're not gonna let those people go, they're gonna stay with us. Uh, and, um, I, I just wanna bring that to your attention. We, uh, had mentioned that to you in the past, got some pretty, uh, in Chief's discussion with the, um, their Public Safety Director, um, Ramirez, that's the path they're headed down. What we would like from you tonight is some direction on the tax rate to, to start, um, moving toward. You'll recall our previous discussions related to this budget year, getting, uh, a good number of employees to the midpoint in the market, particularly police and fire. We're happy that our new recruits are here. It's a very competitive marketplace for employees, especially in police and fire. And, um, really any capacity that, um, would be created this year, we would put towards that, uh, those previous discussions we've had with getting employee salaries to midpoint. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, so to be clear, what we're looking at is, i- if we do the de minimis, somebody tell me what de minimis means? Kim, what does that mean?
The de minimis tax rate is that which, um, generates an additional five hundred thousand dollars a year. So that's over and above what is generated by the forty-four million, the new improvements on your existing tax base. And it's available only for cities with a population of less than thirty thousand.
And does that not, will that go away after this year? Or is it, is it?
It would just be the tax rate that you approved in any given year, yeah, then you're not making, you mean, you're not making a commitment for further.
Right, it's just a one, it would be a one year.
That's correct.
Okay.
Next year, during the next year's budget process, you would have the same options of, you know, the no new revenue tax rate, the voter approved tax rate, the de minimis tax rate, or any tax rate in between.
Okay. So yeah, so looking at our taxes, a good way to look at it is we're at forty-six cents right now, forty-six point one five cents. We have to go up a little bit because of the bond. Uh, we sold nine million dollars in bond based on the voters, voting in May, that will go up, that's roughly, uh, how much is that, a penny, penny and a half? What, what is that?
Yeah, it, it would go from the forty-six point one five seven nine to the forty-seven cents.
So we have to do, we have to do that.
Yes, that's correct. To pay, to pay for the debt service of the nine million dollars that we're going to issue for the, um, design of the library, the senior center, and the first phase of construction of Knowles.
For all the items that the voters approved in the bond election. We're adding that just over a penny, a penny and a quarter, I guess. So we have to do that. So we're at forty-seven regardless. The question is, you know, do we, do the forty-eight or the forty-nine? And what the forty-nine gives us, and Gabe mentioned that, is the ability to get more of our city employees up to the midpoint. We have done, uh, several studies in the last few years about where we are with our, our city employees. Uh, we found a lot, a lot of our city folks are underpaid, not all, but a lot. Um, and I'm, I'm, there's a lot of police officers in the room, and I wanna make sure they're happy too, but, uh, it's not just police officers, police, fire, public works, a lot of our folks, if you do a salary, so we are underpaid, we're undermarketed. Um, so we've been doing a lot of studying to see where we are and what would get that. This will help, uh, if we, if we go the forty-nine cents de minimis rate, that's what it would go for. It would not go for anything else but our employees.
That's correct, and we'd have to prepare to absorb, um, the loss in funding from the school district for those, um, three school resource officers. It's fifty percent each officer, so about a position and a half in the PD over the next, um.
Two budgets.
Two, two budgets, yep.
So the question is really tonight is, do we wanna continue down the path of de minimis? And the reason that's important is de minimis, as Kim mentioned, is a little bit of an accelerated path. Normally we do not approve our budget till the August, um, budget workshop and then that meeting, and we approve a budget officially on first of September. This one will have to be approved in July, once, what's the de minimis approval?
It would, it, we would have to have a special council meeting, um, this, I think instead of August sixteenth, it would, or August seventeenth, it would be August sixteenth, whatever that Monday is, um, would have to be the date of the public hearing and approve the budget. The proposed budget would come to you, um, thirty days before that, so we would have to have that issued by July sixteenth. Um, and like I said, we wouldn't have final tax rate numbers yet, but we could have a proposed budget and then come back to you, um, with tax rate calculations. And then we would also have the budget workshop or the budget retreat, council retreat, that weekend before that council meeting.
The August?
So that would be the Saturday, the fourteenth, and Monday would be August sixteenth. So everything would be moved up almost a month.
A month acceleration, okay.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so that's why we have to discuss it this evening, because we are looking, talking about a pathway that is accelerated about a month over what our normal budget schedule is. So, uh, the reason we do this, our budget starts, uh, October first, so we have to have things in place for that, but de minimis requires even, uh, more, um, approved even earlier, so that's why we're discussing this. So council questions about the budget, questions about de minimis, uh, the real question, the only question we need to answer tonight is, do we want Kim to continue down the de minimis path? We don't have to make a final decision tonight? Yes, sir. Mr. Beasley?
So, um, I know over the past few workshops and things like that, we've been talking about this de minimis, de minimis tax rate, and, um, you know, my passion is for these employees, you know, to, you know, after going through all of these employee workshops and salary workshops and all of these different things, and meeting with several department heads, I've learned that a lot of these employees are underpaid and, and I guess they call, I forgot what they said, it was the Saginaw discount or something, because they live here and.
Hometown discount?
Yeah, all of these different things, but you know, some of them are just, is, is, is terrible to me, you know, so, um, I say we can move, I say we continue to move forward with the de minimis tax rate, as we have been talking about.
Other council members, thoughts, questions? Mary?
Um, I just wanted to explain something to the audience and to anybody who's watching, because I think tax, taxes are so confusing and budgets for the city are so confusing. And this'll be my fifth year to do this, and every year I, I get a little bit more knowledgeable about it. So it's very complicated, but Kim, correct me if I'm wrong, but the reason that the legislature, uh, came up with this de minimis tax last year was because last year, they changed the law that cities now have a cap of three point five percent, the amount that can raise the taxes, compared to what used to be eight percent, was the amount that cities could raise the taxes without a vote. Now, the state legislature has a reputation of being very hard on cities and not passing laws that are very helpful to cities' budgets. But even our state legislature recognized the fact that cities with less than thirty thousand people, which is Saginaw, that three point five percent cap is going to be very difficult for them. So they put in this de minimis rule to say, hey, we're gonna give you some extra help here, you cities that are lower than thirty thousand. So I just wanted everybody to understand that we would be making a huge mistake to not take advantage of that flexibility if in fact we are going to need it. So I do believe that we should go along the path that we will use that. We might decide we don't need to, but I think we need to be prepared to use it in case we do need to, to bring these salaries up. So I just wanted to educate our public a little bit, and, uh, yes, I think we should go along that path.
Okay. Any questions, comments?
Um, I'm still concerned for a large number of citizens in this community that, uh, are still struggling financially. And, um, I think, you know, I, I, I have friends that live in other cities, and I know that their cities are struggling a lot more than we are. We, we were quite fortunate during the pandemic and, um, and snowbit and all the other things that we've been through, but, uh, I've talked with them and their cities are cutting a lot out of their budgets, and I'm wondering what, what is Saginaw planning on cutting out of our budget? And, uh, two.
Mr. Mayor?
Looking at the, uh.
Could you share those cities with me? I'd be happy, maybe right now, if you could. I'd be happy to.
I'll have to go back and look at my notes. I, I don't have that with me tonight.
Okay, oh, that'd be great, we can talk about that in public. And, and, uh, you know, we're all in this together, I wanna let you know, this collaborative effort. So there's no you cutting, it is we together. So if you would like to cut something, please recommend it, I'm happy to work with you.
Well, and, you know, but we don't know what the budget is, so, you know, we don't know what we're looking at to cut, but.
Sure, so.
I mean, it would benefit each department to take a little closer look, to see if there is something that can be cut just, I mean, because the citizens are paying for all of this. And, uh, you know, we don't have to have the biggest and best and the shiniest of everything every year, because, you know, it's the citizens that are having to pay the piper here.
Sure.
And when I look at the no new tax revenue rate, we're still gonna have an increase, but we look at the de minimis tax rate, and it's fifty percent more than what, uh, the no new revenue is, and that's gonna be difficult for a lot of people, especially with the increase, uh, in the housing from TAD.
That's a great point. So that, that no new revenue increase, um, is a direct result of the bonds that voters approved?
I understand.
So voters voted for that, and really to frame it simply, I'll, I'll put him on the spot, uh, because he's here. Lieutenant Murillo, twenty-year employee, he just got his twenty years, which makes him retirement eligible, uh, in our system. He's the exact type of employee that we wanna keep and retain with, uh, competitive salaries. So I, I am hearing you, and no one wants to take, uh, uh, more from, from residents through taxes than what is necessary. Um, oddly enough, I pay a portion of my own salary as a homeowner in Texas, but what we're talking about this budget year, uh, is, uh, it is people, uh, salary adjustment. So that's why we need to hear from you early on, uh, whether we proceed down that path or not. Our budget this year, honestly, outside of some one-time additions, would be salary adjustments for tenured employees, um, and preparing, uh, to absorb that position and a half in the police department. It may be one of the simpler budgets we, uh, as a team, work through together. Uh, but I hear you, and those points are, are, um, great, and I'd be happy to, um, look forward to hearing the cities that you've talked with or your friends live in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Are you done? Sorry.
Yeah.
Anything else? Okay. Valerie, you want, then you wanna add?
We're not making the definite decision tonight for the de minimis. That's all.
So definitely, the employees here, I mean, they're the ones that actually makes the city run. It's just like in a private sector, and I'm actually going through the same thing the company I work for right now, and struggling the same way within my company that I work for, in that, uh, salaries are increasing and the field I'm in are increasing significantly, and it's putting a huge bite on my budget at work, same as here, and I'm, of course, employee, uh, citizen here in Saginaw. But we have to make sure that we're hiring the right type of people. And if we're out of sync with what our neighbors are giving, then we're not going to get good employees. And so that means the citizens will not get good service. So one thing I don't know, and it might be because I'm just starting, but Gabe, do you have a, a breakdown of, you know, Min Max and Mean, of our competitors, which would be the, the cities, the Kellers, the Wataugas, you know, Fort Worth, but the, things like that, where we can look and have it broken up by police, fire, um, you know, things like that, not, not crunch them all together, but actually break them out by their disciplines? That, that would help me greatly, because to me, I'd just look at it and say, okay, well, you know, we don't wanna be way down here where we're har- hiring people that's, you know, barely making it, we, we wanna get good, solid people to work and make sure our city runs smoothly.
Happy to get that from you, or, or to you, um, we've had some, and of course you weren't with us, but we've had some past, um, comparisons with our other metroplex cities, because that is our, our market in, you know, forty-five minute drive of Saginaw, more or less. The chief, uh, presented about that at a past workshop, but yeah, happy to bring that to you.
And one thing you have to remember is you have to go by the tax rates of these other places, the tax bases and the money employees and all that, because there's no way we can compete with a lot of the cities that are right there.
Right.
You have to be very.
It's, it's sort of, it's sort of interesting, so Saginaw, um, because of our industrial base, we kinda punch above our weight in terms of value. So as a residential city, you know, so for example, Wataga is about our size, I believe we have more taxable value because we have more industry here, to our benefit. Um, you know, we have to recognize, to your point, even though we're not the same size, but the city of Fort Worth for Saginaw and for our region sets the tone, or at least sets a, um, a, a standard for many municipal salaries, because all of our, uh, salaries are, you know, comparable in many other cities. I, you know, your wife is a municipal employee, so you have some understanding here, but, uh, we're happy to get you that information.
Yeah, to me, I look at this, it's no different than in the private sector. I, I gotta compete against my competitors out there. If I'm not offering a fair wage, the good employees are gonna go work for company A instead of me.
In, in the, you know, every growing city has the same struggle, so as we grow larger, we need more people and we need good people, so this is certainly not a, um, a novel experience. This is any city that's growing quickly, like Saginaw.
Mr. Beasley, anything you want?
No.
Okay.
De minimis, I mean, like I said, I'm, I'm, I'm down, I'm, I'm, I wanna see these employees taken care of.
Okay. No, and I'm happy.
We can't compete with Fort Worth and all, you know, the bigger ones, but we can definitely, you know, give them what they, give them something, you know? So they don't, I think they give us the second of this.
Good point. Uh, one thing to look at is the very bottom, blue, blue bar. Good point. One thing to look at is the very bottom blue, blue bar. And Kim, make sure I'm saying that correctly. This is what the average homeowner would see in a tax, as a tax increase for the year. Is that correct?
It would be the second from the bottom is the tax bill.
Yeah, the total tax bill, right.
Right. And then the very bottom blue is the increase.
Right. So from, from baseline from today, if we do, we have to do the, the no new, at least the 47. And that would be, the average owner would see a $100 increase over, over the course of a year for the taxes.
But that's not just, that's just for the city of Saginaw. That does not include Tarrant County College, JPS, Tarrant County, and the school district. So this is what, accounts for what, 18% of our tax rate increase?
This is just for the city of Saginaw.
Just 18% of what-
We don't have any impact on the other tax rates.
Right. That's all we control.
You're going to have increases on that too, and that's a thing that concerns me a lot.
And that's all we control is this one though, so, yeah. So that's, that's the important thing really, because people say, how much more will I pay? That's what they want to know. How much more will, you're going to pay 100 bucks more. You just are because of the, the bonds that we just passed.
And, and may I just say one thing? Because again, these are estimates, okay? So it may turn out that the no new revenue tax rate is not 47.3 cents. It could be 46.8 cents. I mean, these are just my best guesses at this, at this point in time, so.
Right. And Kim, can you say that, because we don't have the final TAD numbers yet, the valuations?
That's right.
We don't get those until mid-July?
It'll be July 25th, which is a Sunday, so it may not be until the 26th.
End of July. Because remember, that's how the tax rate, that's how your taxes are calculated. Your, your tax rate times, you know, how much your house is valued at set by TAD. So we don't know what TAD is going to say final until the end of July. So that's why Kim is hedging her bets, but she's usually very close. She's very good. So, so this is just a full transparency, this is what we're looking at right now. If we do de minimis, the average homeowner would see an increase of $141 over a year. So, you know, 14, what's that, 12 bucks a month, just over. So that's, that's what we're talking about. And I am all for going forward with de minimis to see where it lands us. I'm hopeful it will be a little less based on valuations, but we'll see. We will find out. So I think the direction from council is yes to go forward with de minimis. And we'll see where we end up. So let's proceed. Any other questions for Kim? And, and great work, Kim. Appreciate you getting this to us early. All right, we are at 7:12. 7:12, we are back, back in regular session. So one more thing, sorry, let me pull up my calendar real quick. So we have a council meeting on July the 6th. We were talking about canceling that, as we usually do the week of July 4th. There is an opportunity to have a meeting because Kim Lee Horn wants to present their interim comprehensive plan. Is that what it's called?
Yes, sir. So before community forum number two, Kim Lee Horn has requested the opportunity to present their rough draft and, and get the, allow the council to see it before it goes to the public. They would like to do that either the 6th or the 13th. The community forum is the 17th, which I believe is a Saturday. It'll be at Direct Center.
So we have to do it before that, the 20th meeting. So, so council, what's your pleasure? The 6th or the 13th for a short, one item meeting? What do y'all think? Either one?
Either one.
What do you, Nikki, you okay?
Same.
Charles? How about we just, how about the, we've got one planned on the 6th. You want to just keep it on the 6th? Our normal two-week cycle?
Yeah, yeah.
You okay? We promise, Gabe is promising it'll be a short meeting, right?
You know, I, I can't-
Hand on the Bible, it's going to be a short meeting, right?
You have as much to do with the length as I do, so ball's in your court.
Let's keep it on the 6th then, okay? Everybody good with that? We'll do a one item meeting on the 6th and then we'll be back on the 20th. So. All right, so that brings us to the very la, no executive session, right? Thank the Lord. All right, so item 17 is adjournment. And per our tradition, the new person gets to make the motion to adjourn.
I was terrified.
Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
Do I have a second? Valerie, second? Although the favor raised right now, those opposed, all right, it's 7:14, we're done. Thank y'all.